Bienvenidos, este mensaje será repetido en español. Good evening, before we get started, I'd like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comments. So if you wish to speak tonight, please raise your hand now. Otherwise, you will have to wait till the end of the meeting. The board president will determine what they just said tonight's meeting time to one, two, or three minutes. And we'll allow our students to speak first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please indicate you are a student by writing "student" at the end of your name. The board president also has the discretion to allow for extra time to those who need translation, have other speeches. To participate in public comment, please begin to raise your hand now. To participate by phone, please do so by pressing star nine. The vice president Brown will be holding up a sign letting you know when your time is up. You will know when you have fifteen seconds left if you are still speaking. Please continue to finish your sentence but do not speak beyond your time.
Buenas noches, bienvenidos. Quisiera proporcionar un breve resumen espetando el orden de esta reunión. Después de los procedimientos preliminares, habrán treinta minutos dedicados a comentarios públicos. Si desea participar en comentario público, por favor levantarse una mano ya. Ya que si se espera, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la junta para poder participar en la segunda llamada. Si hay estudiantes que desean abarcar esta noche, por favor levantar la mano ya. Y indicar que son estudiantes al escribir "estudiante" después de su nombre. El presidente otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, usted será la vicepresidenta, Catiche Brown, levantar un signo indicando que le falta quince segundos. Si todavía está hablando, por favor terminar su oración, pero tratar de no sobrepasarse de su tiempo. El presidente también tiene la discreción otorgar tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otra adaptación especial. Para participar en este comentario público, por favor levantar su mano al presionar el botón de su pantalla, "Raise Your Hand". Al ser llamado, se lo otorgará el tiempo designado por el presidente. Si desea participar por teléfono, hágalo al presionar estrella nueve. Una vez más, la vicepresidenta, Catiche Brown, indicará cuánto tiempo le falta. Con su signo, ella levantará el signo cuando le faltan quince segundos. Por favor de terminar su oración pero no sobrepasarse de su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charas. Welcome everybody to the August twenty-fifth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. Calling the meeting to order it at seven oh six P M. And for the record, we opened the meeting at six P M. And recessed to close session. Ms. Charas, can you please call the roll?
Sort of director, Regina Muscarain, yes, one. Director Ana Basudev.
Presente.
Director Laura Babett.
Here.
Director Julie Simon.
Sinai, here.
Vice President Catiche Brown.
Present.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Charas. Now, we need to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Director Rastadov.
Second.
Second by Director Brown, Ms. Charas. I mean Vice President Brown, sorry.
Director Muscarain, yes, one. Yes. Director Basudev.
Yes.
Director Babett.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Now I'm going to turn over to Vice President Brown to report out from closed session.
Thank you, President Albert, for item three point one point one. It was moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Vice President Brown. And the motion passed four to zero with Director Vasudev in abstention. In abstention. For item three point two, the board provided direction. And for item three point three, the board provided direction. These are the notes from closed session.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Oh, okay, so we have come to public comment. As Ms. Charas mentioned, now is the time to raise your hand if you'd like to provide public comment. Once we start the public comment period, we won't be adding people. You can speak at the end of the meeting in our second public comment period. But if you'd like to give public comment, I'll give you a couple of seconds now to raise your Zoom hand. Okay. We have one, two, three, five people for public comment. They'll each have three minutes. You don't have to take all three minutes, but you have up to three minutes. I'm going to name all five because there's only five. Lydia Craig Hill, then Rachel Toby, then Hannah Stone, then Oscar Luna, then Hasmeen Manassian. And then there's a sixth, but then there's only six because we're about to start. Dan L will be the sixth. Okay, Lydia Craig Hill, you're first, and you have three minutes.
You're muted, Ms. Craig Hill. We can't hear you.
Sorry, thank you, Director Senna.
Thank you very much. I'm Lydia Craig Hill. I'm a Berkeley High School teacher, special education teacher, and I'm a B F T side rep. And I'm speaking to advocate that some of the COVID relief funding that B U S D received from the state and federal government be allocated towards personnel who can oversee COVID protocols at school sites. On Monday, every one of my class sections was exposed to a positive individual. And since then, I've been experiencing firsthand many very serious issues with the COVID nineteen protocols at Berkeley High. Support staff in my classroom were not notified that they were exposed to COVID nineteen. Visitors in my classroom on Monday, such as case managers and speech therapists, weren't notified they were exposed to COVID. Multiple students who were asked to quarantine showed up to school again after they were exposed. And I was receiving calls at seven at night, eight, nine at night from frightened parents who didn't know how quarantining is going to affect their child's grades and attendance. And also, teachers are lacking guidance on how to support students quarantining at home. So if schools are going to remain open, then this really complicated process can't be forced onto our already overworked administration team. And we need a dedicated staff member or team to oversee COVID-related protocols at each school site. And I urge you to consider how the COVID relief funding can support this need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig Hill. Rachel Toby, followed by Hannah Stone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rachel Toby. I'm a parent of a King eighth grader and a Craigmont fifth grader. And I'm calling in to make comment about the middle school rezoning process. This is a very big decision for B U S D and deserves a full and transparent community engagement process. A full process would allow the necessary time to engage broad and diverse stakeholder groups, and particularly the elementary school families who would be most affected by the decision. COVID obviously continues to dominate people's attention spans. And many people were and continue to be unaware that this important decision is being considered. The end of June meetings were poorly attended, as might be predicted for a summer month after a hectic year. Having only one more set of meetings in late September does not feel like a robust community engagement process. In order to fully engage with the community, it seems we need more time. Not two sets of meetings and a survey in the course of just four months. The process has also not been totally transparent to date. While the survey had a decent response rate, it was not clear to respondents what the actual implication was. A transparent process would be clear to families that approximately one-third of Berkeley families in the district who believe they know where their rising sixth grader would attend middle school would actually be told that the plan is different than what they expect today. This decision would also likely be communicated to the community in December of 2021, when enrollment in schools starts in January. Finally, a robust community engagement process would also include answering community questions. Questions that have come up, but the district has not shed any light on yet, include things like would the district invest in bus transportation for middle schoolers? And are these funds that could be better spent investing in Longfellow programs? Because families have also grown attached to school communities at King and Willard, would the district consider allowing families with younger siblings to follow their older siblings to King or Willard, even if the older sibling had already moved on to Berkeley High? And finally, for the two options, both the feeder school option and the dividing the district into three zones, what would the actual proposed feeder schools or zones be? And finally, how is the major planned capital renovation at Longfellow being considered in this decision, given that it will likely prevent full enrollment at Longfellow over the next three years? The last eighteen months have been tremendously difficult for children, families, and the district alike, as the world seemed to spin out of control. While this decision absolutely needs to be made, I would suggest that it should not be made this year. Elementary families should be given ample lead time to understand the change once the decision is made. The current timeline feels precipitous and rushed on many fronts, and especially for such a significant community decision. I urge the board and the district to take the time of this school year to engage in a robust community process.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Oscar Luna, followed by Hasmeen Manassian. Go ahead, Mr. Luna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I am joining this meeting and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this panel. And I'm going to refer to the changing the enrollment policy at B U S D. This is a very important and consequential decision that will impact a large number of families, including mine. My family lives in the Berkeley Hills. And just like Rachel Toby very clearly and eloquently explained, we believe that the participation was not sufficient, as it happened in the summertime. And B U S D should have a more transparent and inclusive process of eliciting the opinions of parents. I'm also speaking up because I'm an immigrant and I belong to a minority. And in my family, both parents in my family have a full-time work. And I strongly believe that in the Berkeley Hills, I'm not a unique case. There are a lot of families like mine that will be significantly and negatively affected if we are going to be transporting our kids to Longfellows. So this will impose an enormous cost to us. And it will impose cost to the environment and to the community in order to transport dozens of kids from one corner of Berkeley to the other. So I will I will ask the panel to think very carefully about this decision and trying to make a decision that will not negatively impact a lot of working families that live in the Berkeley Hills and find a solution that will not have a tremendous impact in the environment and in the traffic conditions of Berkeley. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next, we have Hasmeen Manassian, followed by Dan L. And Dan L will be our last speaker of this public comment period. Ms. Manassian, there you are. Do you know how to unmute yourself?
I've forgotten how to Zoom already. It's been so good. Give me one second. I'm just going to deal with my dual screen here. All right, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. My name is Hasmeen Manassian, and I'm the teacher leader for the Universal Ninth Grade at Berkeley High. I'm among a staff of two hundred plus at the high school who are excited and energized to be back on campus this year. I'm here to tell you on day eight that the system, as it is currently operating, is completely unsustainable. There are simply not enough bodies on campus to keep students supervised and safe, much less inspired, learning, and thriving. Our administrators have a more than full-time job doing contact tracing and pulling students out of classes and sending them home. Or they are covering classes themselves for teachers who are missing. We have two unfilled teaching positions in the U nine. One has paperwork that still hasn't cleared H R, and we have no sense of when it will. The other is an empty physics position we can't seem to fill. Most students at B H S are in front of at least one substitute every day. And your own Gwendolyn Gascarios from H R had to come and sub for us yesterday because we were short adults in front of kids. Since the first day of school last Monday, I've subbed every single one of my sixth period prep periods for another teacher who is out because of COVID, not having their paperwork cleared by H R, having a child with COVID, vertigo, back sprain, and stress-induced migraine. This is to say nothing of the fact that we don't have time to do the most important parts of our jobs, support our new students' transition to B H S, planning robust and engaging lessons, reading through our students' I E Ps and five oh fours, and beginning our own critical family engagement processes. There are not enough hours in our day, and you know me, if the hours were there, I would find them. I have been at B H S for twenty-one years. I have never had a week one like this. We are barely operating. It will fall, and staff will fall alongside it from exhaustion, stress, and overwhelm. What is your threshold for closing the school, not from COVID, but from a sheer lack of human power to keep the engine running? Please do not point the finger at our admin. They cannot possibly work more hours. I'm not an alarmist, but I'm ringing the alarms and alerting you. You are flying this plane in severe turbulence, relying on a very malfunctioning autopilot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Dan L will be our final speaker of this public comment period.
Good evening. My name is Dan Levertin. One second, I'm just trying to remove excess audio. Thank you. I have a junior at Berkeley High, and I have two questions concerning COVID. One is, we are in unfortunate fire season, which often requires windows be closed. I thought that I saw a grant for the Berkeley High to get air filtration systems. Last time, we had fire season as a result of COVID. But I'm not hearing confirmation from my daughter that there is any sort of HEPA filtration occurring in the classrooms. That's a concern in as much as, you know, at the moment, we're on the threshold there, you know, being safe or unsafe. So I would appreciate some sort of update from the school as to whether or not they have filtration of the HEPA quality in the classroom that both removes most of the virus and the smoke from the air, keeping our students safe. Second, the most recent email that I read with regards to COVID exposure seems to be relying upon an old criteria, which is six feet at fifteen minutes. That was pre-Delta, and now we have Delta, which can be transmitted in a matter of seconds without a fifteen-minute exposure requirement. So I'm curious, when are we going to update the exposure definition, and how are we going to manage that? It's, you know, it's clear that most classrooms don't have adequate space for six feet. So again, as a concerned parent, I would appreciate an update on keeping our students safe when the air quality is poor inside classrooms and whether or not there's adequate filtration. And when are we going to update the exposure criteria for what? As a parent, I now have received three COVID notifications exposures. I expect them to be continuous for the foreseeable future until we get past this pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, now we are going to turn to committee, no, union comments. We don't have any pre-recorded union comments, so if there's any union representatives here, this is the time to raise your hand. I don't see any. Are there any committee representatives here? If so, now is the time to raise your hand. Okay, we'll move to board member and superintendent comments. Board members, is there someone who'd like to go first? V P K B.
I'll pass this evening. Thank you.
Director Sinai.
I'll just briefly start out tonight by thanking those who came for public comment. And I really want to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation and thanks to all of the teachers, staff, and administrators, and any of the other, you know, volunteers or folks who've been on campus who have helped with the COVID response. We were prepared and preparing for the COVID of last spring. And we, not just B U S D, but education at the K twelve, higher ed, public health, private sector, none of us have really been prepared for the spread of the Delta variant. And I just, I want to take a moment to appreciate the fact that the city of Berkeley has its own public health department and really want to reach out across the streets to our city partners and say, help. And our healthcare partners and all of our community. Because I think hearing what, you know, Hasmeen said from Berkeley High and the parents and getting the emails and hearing from our staff, we're in an untenable situation right now, and we really need help. And I don't think it's anybody's fault. I think the Delta variant has thrown our entire state, you know, off kilter. And that's not to excuse anything. That's just to say we need to pull together. So I really just want to thank the tireless effort that everybody has been making and also the stress that all of our families are going through as we kind of maneuver through this. And I want to appreciate Mr. Luna and Ms. Toby's comments about middle school. And I'll talk about that more when we get to the middle school item. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Director Sinai. Director Muscarain, yes, one. Do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Director Sinai said and appreciate both everyone who came out to this meeting today to speak and also to all the staff and teachers and administrators who've been working really hard and overtime over the past few weeks. You know, I've been in school for about seven days now, and there has definitely been a lot of challenges. But there's also been a lot of really beautiful moments that I've got to witness. There's a lot of just amazing things like that I've seen at Berkeley High and heard from my sister who goes to Willard. Yeah, and I just also wanted to appreciate all of that that's happening and just emphasize how important I think the need for transparency is throughout this and communication, both, you know, within our community and also as board members. I think that, yeah, just continuing being as transparent as possible and having as much open dialogue as possible is definitely what we need to be looking towards as we navigate through this transitional period. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Director Babett.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight and for sharing all of your concerns and for keeping us informed and updated. We do truly appreciate it and agree wholeheartedly with Director Sinai, as well as our student director, that we have work to do, and we will make sure that we get on that job because our student safety and our faculty safety is at our primary concern. I also want to acknowledge the great start of the year for many families and many educators. My own daughter, the first day she just came home, she was knocked out cold, four o'clock to eight o'clock. So excited and so happy and so enjoying doing her homework and just being involved. So I am truly appreciative that our schools are open, truly appreciative that we do have parameters in place and know that there is work to do to address the Delta variant and all the various changes. Definitely want to encourage all those who can to please get vaccinated. That truly helps us. As much as you can participate in helping us, vaccinations would be awesome and great. And then I want to thank the O F I staff with the K to twelve college and all of the participants. That was truly a wonderful launch into our school reopening. Everyone who was there came with the spirit of happy to give, happy to serve. I saw most of my board colleagues rotate through at some point during the day. Berkeley Public Schools Fund, amazing as always, giving away laptops, and families were coming over like, really? We don't have to give these back? And we're like, that's what they said. Isn't this great? So that was really exciting because we do want to make sure that all of our students show up to school ready to learn. And I want to just thank all of our collaborative partners, Berkeley Public Schools Fund, Covenant Church, and the SupplyBank.org, and all of the work that our O F I staff did to coordinate and implement such a well-attended, safe, fun event. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Babett. Our superintendent is having internet issues, so he's trying to get back on. In the meantime, I will go to Director Rastadov. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you again for coming tonight. I really appreciate everyone who took the time to give us your public comments. For the parents that spoke about the middle school assignment process, I share a lot of your concerns. So thank you so much for coming and expressing these, and I look forward to our discussion tonight. I also want to echo a lot of the issues raised by my fellow directors. Director Babett completely agree with what she said. Vaccination is incredibly important right now. That's our first defense, right? Make sure that all of our students who are eligible for vaccines get vaccinated. And also, you know, if our families need information, please reach out to your school sites if you have questions about that. But know that that's our first line of defense and that, you know, testing and all these other mitigation efforts are important as well. But vaccines are at the forefront. I also just want to thank all of our educators who gave public comment as well. I think, you know, for a lot of people, as you know, Director Sinai said, we're thinking about the COVID nineteen virus, you know, based on spring data, right? And then the Delta variant came very late in the summer. And I think, you know, with modified quarantine and a lot of the new policy changes at the state level, it's really, really hard to implement them at school sites. I, you know, toured a couple of schools. I was very excited to go to King and to see our middle schoolers back. It was a wonderful visit. Thank you to Principal Levinson for showing me around. And now I got to see some of these things in action, how hard it is when a student gets sick and what happens and what's the protocol. And just really want to say thank you to our educators and our admin staff and our classified And just really want to say thank you to our educators and our admin staff and our classified staff for being superheroes. We're being asked to do a lot and I think under these new regulations. And I'm very appreciative of our staff for, for doing that. And I, and I also just want to say for, you know, our families who continue to have questions about these little changes and different policy changes, let us know, let us know what they're looking like. You know, at your site level, share any feedback that you have, please write to the board because we need to hear that. And we need to know how to, how to best support our families during this time. It's a transition time. It's not like we just flip the switch and everything is going to go back to before the pandemic. We're all adjusting and, you know, there's a lot of new protocols that we have to follow. So thank you so much for being patient with us and please express your concerns. I'm having office hours on September 12th from nine to 10:30 at Espresso Roma Cafe on Hopkins Street. It's on the, on my website, on the board website, you can see my office hours. But that's a time that I really look forward to engaging with families in person, you know, to be outside with masks. But you can write to me or you can come to office hours. I really want to hear your concerns. Having two little guys that are really excited to be back in school, there's an exciting time, but it's also challenging. So thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Director Rastidav. Our superintendent is still trying to get on, but I'm going to move us along to the, um, oh, he's back. Okay. I want to remind everybody, as Director Rastidav mentioned, the, her office hours and all of our office hours are listed on the BUSD website. So that's always the place you can go to, to look for board members' office hours. Director Stevens, welcome back. You're muted. Oh, you look like you're on your phone.
It's frozen. Over to my phone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can now.
I'll give it a shot. I'm just logging in. So, so am I up?
Yeah, you are. Do you, do you have comments or you want to, go ahead?
Yeah, why, why don't I try to? I, I seem to be suffering from a, a pretty unstable internet connection tonight. So why don't I try to offer a few comments and we'll see how it goes?
Okay, go ahead.
Great. So I, like, I imagine my, my colleagues on the governance team have as well. Just want to offer my profound thanks to everybody in the district who has contributed so much over the last eight days of school to reopen all twenty of our campuses to welcome 10,000 students back and 1,300 employees. This really has been a sort of massive example of a team effort. As I've been visiting schools over the last week, what I've really been impressed by is the sense of gladness, folks seeing each other, a sense of community, and that everybody is, after such a long time, glad finally to be resuming something that's a bit more like normal. Earlier in public comment, one of our high school teachers sort of commented on the strain that is taking place at the high school, but that I know is also true across all of our campuses and in our district office. And that strain, as, as Hasmig Manassian described it, is very real right now. And it is, I think, a moment for all of our community to continue to come together, to ask what each of us can do to try and solve the problems that we're confronting as we step into this new stage of the pandemic. Those challenges we'll describe in the, in the fourth right way in coming presentations. They include the ongoing impact of sort of late labor market challenges as it relates to staffing, particularly in positions like nude monitors, instructional assistance and after-school programs. Substitute teachers have also been heavily impacted. We are very much like our sister districts in the Bay Area in that respect. This month alone, we've had more cases on our campuses, more cases we're investigating than in the previous four months combined. So we are certainly experiencing an uptick, as is the rest of the country. And this is putting a tremendous strain on our administrative resources, our ability to communicate clearly to our community and attract multiple cases and ensure that we minimize the disruption to students' education. It is true now that we're experiencing new contact tracing procedures. These are more involved than they were. They have the advantage of helping students to stay on campus, but they're also far more complicated and require a great deal more administrative work to implement. And then we've also been sort of experiencing the strain related to standing up a new form of testing program. We're glad to be switching over to a rapid testing program to have new family enrollment procedures put in place, which we hope will be streamlined and lead to greater participation. And we're experiencing shortages in the supply chain. And in fact, we experienced disruptions in what we anticipated would be our start date to a universal surveillance testing program earlier this week. So in coming presentation, we're going to give you much more detail about both the successes as we've experienced them over the opening eight days, and there have been many of them, as well as some of the strains that we are experiencing and that we seek to be transparent about with our community. So we appreciate the opportunity to share that information this evening. And I'll turn it back over to you, President Helper. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Okay. Moving to the consent counter, have a motion to approve the consent counter?
I'll move it.
Director Sinai? Do you want to second it, Director Muscarina Swan?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot, but seconded by Director Muscarina Swan. Ms. Joris, can you call the roll?
Student Director Muscarina Swan. Yes. Director Rastidav.
Yes.
Director Babett.
Yes.
Director Steinert.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Now we will move to our first discussion item. So is this you, Dr. Stevens, or Assistant Superintendent Aurelio?
I'm actually going to be turning it over to two of my colleagues. So that's Assistant Superintendent Aurelio and then our Public Information Officer, Trish McDermott.
Great.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Ruben Aurelio, Associate Superintendent. I mean, just make sure you're all here. I mean, do I see any thumbs up? Yep, perfect. Great. So good evening, Director Muscarina Swan, Director Sinai, Director Babett, Director Rastidav, Vice President Brown and President Helper, Dr. Stevens, community and staff. I'm here this evening with my colleague, Trish McDermott, to just give an update on the school opening so far. In tonight's presentation, we're just going to quickly, just some observations regarding week one. We are in day eight. We just completed day eight of school. And a quick update on enrollment. Talk about some supplies and some giveaways that were fantastic. And then some updates on professional development, and then we will turn to COVID health and safety as well. So, and I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. Just quickly, some week one observations. I'm not going to read these to you all. I just speak to my experience. I had the opportunity on day one of school to visit, I want to say, seven schools that day. It was obviously, as the new guy on the block, it was really nice to come to campuses and see families. I started my morning at Thousand Oaks, right at drop-off time. There was a lot of excitement, a lot of families really ready to turn their children back over to our schools. You know, a different experience for our new families, especially around kindergarten, to drop off at a gate. But there was definite excitement in the air. Students, staff, administrators, everyone really being friendly, everyone really being patient with the new procedures that we were putting in place. We did have some, a few minor hiccups around those drop-offs and pickups. And we have been working through those with our site administration, just to make sure we're using multiple gates to get them in and off campus. I really want to highlight the quote that's on this. This is from one of our administrators, Joshua, at the early childhood. It just, it really does highlight the return-to-school feeling. Just to see students back in, on campus, really excited to see each other. And like I said, I was able to visit classrooms and just really nice environment. A sense of normalcy even with masks being worn across the board. Just, it's been way too long for us to be out of school in this environment. Moving us to a quick enrollment update, we are doing a daily count every 10 days. This data you're looking at, I did update it, so it does not match exactly what was on the agenda. I've been updating the data. This is as of yesterday, eight twenty, actually two days ago, eight twenty-three. We did update the data. We are getting closer and closer to our projected amounts, were roughly ninety-six point eight seven percent of what was projected. I know the admissions office is working with school sites to, at this point, start to do the drops of no-show students. So by day ten, we will have more, much more accurate data at that point. Couple trends to point out, we are seeing our, we're below our projection at the elementary levels. Primarily, we're seeing that at the younger grades, the kindergarten, first grade levels, where we are falling short of what we projected. But then we're also seeing an increase in our high school. Actually, as of this printing, hundred and seventy-one students above projected. So we're really watching that closely, ensuring that one, we're hitting our class size averages, working with the union to make sure that, you know, we are meeting the goals that we set for. I know that we've been trying to monitor closely our independent study enrollment, especially around the newly developed virtual academy. So this is some updated data. You can see where we are, where we are for virtual academy, roughly forty-four students. I do want to note that eight of those students are from Sylvia Mendez, which is two-way immersion. And one thing we are exploring and trying to secure is some Spanish language support that would be offered via an after-school time period. So we are looking to support those students who are from the dual language, even though the program itself is not dual language. We would look for some Spanish language support. The other piece I want to mention is that we are looking at, right now, staffing for a sixth-grade virtual academy. That is an energy, some of our families who are in the K-assisted homeschool would really like to see the virtual component, similar to the virtual academy. So we are exploring that option for those families. This is just an update regarding our after-school programming. Right before school started, we had a pretty big concern around staffing these programs. It continues to be a concern. We have made some strides in reducing the staff needed. We were at thirty-seven, we're down to about twenty-four and a half positions. That does equate to about two hundred and forty-seven students that are currently wait-listed for Bear's and Learn's programming. The after-school staff is exploring every possible option to add adults to these programs. We're looking at potentially third-party providers to do enrichment activities that would help us increase the adult or decrease the adult-to-student ratio. So we could add additional staff. And additional students. One thing I want to note is the images you're seeing in the background of these slides were all from either the first week of school. This image on the background is actually highlighting the giveaway that happened right before school. Director Babett spoke to that wonderful event. I don't know if many of you were there. And at that event, we were able to give away a significant number of school supplies, Chromebooks to families. It was a fantastic event, especially for myself, being new to the district, to see the love and support that we are offering our families. This is a reminder that we are still running the EdHub at the adult school. So for families who still need supplies, we are, we have Chromebooks that are available as well for those students who potentially have to shift to a quarantine status, who need devices to access education. We do have that available as well. To speak on the professional development, we did have a professional development day before the start of school. Here are some examples of the programs that were offered. I want to highlight that we obviously had to get all our staff up to speed on a new student information system that is Infinite Campus. And we are continuing to support our schools with this new platform. Also, we started our work around our dyslexia settlement agreement. Rolling out our universal screener, we're looking to provide, we provided instructional support to our teachers around that. And then we will be testing fairly soon that that will launch as well. You can see that different sites had different examples of anti-racist abolitionist teaching, ready for equity. That was at King, King Middle School. I also want to point out that for our principals and special education staff, we brought in some training around to get here process. And this is really targeting specifically how we run our IEPs, especially in support of our families who are coming back to us in person, having had a year of distance learning and really need an opportunity to update IEPs. Now, Tricia, are you, I don't remember if you're speaking to this or I can speak to this. I'll turn it over to you then.
Thank you and hello, everyone. So over, I think in the next couple of slides, we will be providing an update on some of our safety protocols that are now in place since our school opened. And this first slide looks at our vaccination rate. So we were able to verify through a state database that eighty, just really eighty-three percent of our staff are now fully vaccinated. As a reminder, that's they've received their second dose and two weeks have passed. If it's a two-dose shot or two weeks after their first dose. And I would just qualify this by saying that in some instances, we weren't able to actually locate the record for an employee in the database. So it could be that there are more employees who are fully vaccinated and we will work to determine that. So, so that's what next week HR will be doing. We will look to this seventeen percent of employees and just do some further work to determine their vaccination rate. And then we'll also be looking at other people who are on our school campuses, including our essential volunteers and some of our partner organizations. And then our mandatory vaccination program for our staff will require that if staff are not fully vaccinated, beginning the first week in September, they are then mandated to test every week. So as Superintendent Stevens, sorry, Superintendent Stevens mentioned, we've seen a lot of COVID cases this month, twenty-four currently on the dashboard. And we invite everyone in the community to look to the dashboard for more information, both about cases and about how cases actually land on the dashboard. And these twenty-four cases are, represent something like four to six months of cases that we were previously dealing with. So we've really had to move very quickly to ramp up our case response and to do what really is this public health work. And I want to just speak briefly about the communications process because I know this is of great interest to the community. Largely, parents and guardians want to understand when and how they get notified when there is a case at their school. So we look at this in terms of a public health priority. So when we learn of a case, our first objective is actually to talk to that case. And in some cases, that's a parent or guardian, it could be a staff member. Or if, if the case is not actually doing well, it could be, you know, a coworker. We're trying to determine a couple of things. Most importantly, when this person, well, verifying that they tested positive. And then also when their symptoms started, if in fact they have symptoms. Because we use that to go back and determine when they were infectious and when they were on a school campus or one of our facilities. And based on that, we then create a close contact list. And this is both students and staff. And this can be in multiple groups. So this could be students on a bus, students in a before and after-school program, students in a class, if there were pullouts, if there were other extracurriculars that the students were involved in. So this is a fairly comprehensive process. And then we're making a determination about what quarantine that we can actually offer. And some of this is based on our testing capabilities, which I think we'll speak to in the next slide. And then we're creating, based on the timeframe, again, when they were exposed, we're creating a, a quarantine period for them, which includes if they are on a modified quarantine, when they actually have to test to remain in school. And then finally, our, or actually our next, in terms of public health priorities, is to work with the city of Berkeley and the SPOT database. And that's the school portal outbreak tracking. And this is where we're now giving all of this close contact information and case information to public health. And then public health is starting to do their own contact tracing. And then finally, we notify families that were not close contacts, so students who were not close contacts and staff who were not close contacts, that there was a case at their school or at their facility, if it's staff. And this is just part of our transparency process. And we also want people to know, when they see a case go up on our dashboard, we want them to know what their status is, their student was a close contact or wasn't a close contact, et cetera.
And I skipped a slide, so I went back to it for you.
Okay, that's all right. Yeah, a little out of order, but that's fine. So then finally, just to update on testing. Superintendent Stevens spoke about the fact that there's currently a statewide shortage of tests. And although we were able to get some tests this week, it was a very limited number. So last week, we reached So last week, we reached out to families and we're continuing to do so and asked them to register their student for testing. And registration this year is very simple. It's one step, one-time registration. And then your student is registered both for the surveillance testing, which is just the scheduled weekly testing. And then also for case response testing. And that's the testing where we go to a school when students have been a close contact. And we're able to test those students and providing that those students are not symptomatic and they were masked, which they will be. Then those students with a negative test can remain on, on campus. So there's these two types of testing. Most students will just experience the surveillance testing. But if they are a close contact, then, then we have this modified testing. So this week, on a very limited basis, we were able to deploy our testing units to some schools where students had. Were close contacts and would qualify for modified testing. And we're able to test those students and, and we plan to do so also tomorrow and likely Friday. And those students then can remain on campus. And then finally, just in terms of athletics, so students at the high school level who are participating in athletics this season. Will actually be required to test twice weekly. And again, this week, we were able on a limited basis to test students who actually were competing. I think it was water polo this week. And then next week, that will roll out at full capacity. And then also just an update in terms of athletics, that spectators will be permitted at our athletic competitions, competitions, but at a thirty-three percent capacity.
That is a presentation. Thank you. We're here for any questions.
Thank you both so much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start and then I'll, then I'll go to Director Babbitt. So much appreciation for you both and for all of you and particularly Ms. McDermott, I know that you didn't expect to be a public health. Officer guru when you took this job. And I know how many hours a day you've been working and spearheading this sort of, the responses to so many of these. Unforeseen and unprecedented challenges. So just want to particularly appreciate you and all the work you've been doing. It's, it's actually amazing to me that we've only gotten the number of complaints that we have gotten because it's such a chaotic process. There's so, that we're operating with so little information, so few resources. And just ever-changing circumstances and. What, what you and all the staff have sort of managed to pull off in the first eight days of school so that. The vast majority of our kids could be in school is really extraordinary and so appreciated. And I just hope we can, we can keep it up. And I know that that will depend on. As Director Sinai said, I think really powerfully and echoed by Dr. Stevens, that will depend on the community coming together. And us getting the help that we need from our city partners, hopefully more from the state. And some, some patients from our community as well for the challenges that we're trying to address. I, the two, two questions I had, Ms. McDermott, or one at least is for you. And what you just described, the sort of protocols. That, that we're trying to follow when there's a test. You know, there's only, I'm looking, there's only forty people on this call, on this Zoom. And so. They've, they've heard it and I think you explained it clearly in addition to the challenges. And I'm just wondering in what other. In what other format are we providing families with an explanation of what's going to happen? I know that, and maybe Director Babbitt might ask this at the last meeting about a flow chart. And I know that we've got the flow charts and the county flow charts, super confusing, but that's just the reality of the situation is confusing. But it does seem like there's some, as a parent, I know I've gotten a lot of different emails. And, and I looked on our website just now and I don't see any one place that says kind of this is what's going to happen. When, when there's a positive test at your kid's school, this is the priority you're going to be notified in. So this is why you might not hear in the first five hours because it wasn't in your kid's class, you know, that kind of thing. Is, can you just tell us, talk a little bit about what the plan is for letting people know what the protocols are?
Yes, and thank you. I think that's a really accurate observation. So we do have a safety plan. There is a flow chart in the safety plan and there is some top-line information about how we respond to cases. But I, I'm not sure that we really have communicated well to the community about the public health priority in terms of our response. And I think that's why sometimes community members hear through friends that there is a case and they haven't heard yet. And so we do plan to update our safety plan on a regular basis. And I think this might be the time. As we have been very deep in responding to cases this week, I think, you know, we're starting to understand where there is some confusion in the community. And, and what we can do to rectify that. And then we do have a campus reopening page where we have a good amount of information about COVID, COVID protocols and safety information. And it might be appropriate, appropriate as well to just have a top-line explanation there. So parents can quickly get to that website page and understand what's going on.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Something obviously translated that. That they could maybe something that could go out to the community that directs people to where, if they're confused about what the protocols are, here's where they can go to. I know there's, you know, there's no time, there's no, it's not like any of you have any free time, but this, but. But it might, it might, you know, save some anxiety on the part of some families to know kind of what's going to happen. I think it would. My other question is just, is a little bit more, I don't know, specific, which is. You mentioned the, the, the shortage of tests statewide and that seems like a, a real concern. And I'm, I'm wondering about the, the twice-weekly testing for, for athletes at the high school. And is there some, I forget if that's a state requirement for athletics or is that a decision we made to test? Those students twice a week and should we be, if there's a real shortage, should we be saving some of those tests for? You know, other things that we might need, like when there's a positive case at a certain site or for elementary kids who are not yet capable of being vaccinated. Who makes that call? And is that something we should be talking about?
Yes. So that's also a great question. There's actually no guidance relative to this for this school year. We looked at athletics and made some determination. Many of these students are very close contacts, just based on the sport they're playing and how close they are to each other. In some instances, like in water polo or sports in the pool, they cannot mask while they're competing. And so it seemed that these students perhaps. You know, testing them twice would just really help us stop the spread if there are cases on sports teams. I know that we've had conversations with City of Berkeley Public Health relative to this. There was no mandate on this, but this just seemed like a best practice given the exposure these students have.
I guess I would just, I'll stop after this, but and Director Babbitt, you're next, but. I guess I would just suggest we look at that again because if, if students are vaccinated. Then, then I'm not sure, I mean, and I'm not an expert, but using, having them test twice a week if they're vaccinated. When there might be unvaccinated kids at elementary school. Who can, who we can use those tests for. And if the tests are limited, then that may be something to reconsider or at least look at it again.
You know, would you mind, President Albert, just jump in very quickly?
No, please.
So, so we did have a chance to confer this morning with City of Berkeley, as we do frequently, actually nearly daily for contact tracing. And each week, just for all other matters. We've described to them that, that we're just beginning to assemble a stockpile of test kits. We were very fortunate that the City of Berkeley was able to work through their jurisdiction. To secure the first delivery of ten thousand kits for Berkeley Unified. And then we just confirmed today that we're expecting receipt of about the same number of kits from the California Department of Public Health. So for the first time, we'll have a stockpile. If we're engaged in weekly surveillance testing at all levels, we expect that we would go through those twenty thousand kits in about two weeks. So, so we are right now being guided by our partners in the City of Berkeley to think about strategically using that stockpile. And they recommended that we would target three populations specifically, so unvaccinated school population. So that's, that's elementary school. Middle school to a degree. They also recommended then using those kits for testing for students assigned to modified quarantine. To be sure that they can come to school and then athletics in that sort of priority order. So we have yet to communicate this to the public. But, but we think right now, if we're going to experience the supply shortage, that that sort of strategic rationing might be in order.
Yeah, well, to me, that sounds, that just sounds very concerning that. I mean, it's great that we were able to obtain those test kits, but if they will last two weeks and we don't necessarily, I mean, I assume we hope to get more. But I don't know, then all the more reason why it seems like not a great idea to double, twice a week vaccinated. People, you know, vaccinated student athletes. So even if they're the fourth priority, it seems like maybe they should be even lower if they're vaccinated. Because we know if they're vaccinated, and I know we're going to be, we're going to be discussing whether we should be requiring them to be vaccinated. But that's helpful information. So I appreciate that. Okay, Director Babbitt.
Thank you for that presentation and for all those details. And especially for all of your hard work and late night hours that you all have been spending trying to map this out. And communicate as clearly efficiently and effectively as possible. I have a question around what is a close contact? I know, uh, specific to a classroom. So are we assigning students seats at all grade levels? So that a close contact could be considered more around those who sit near them? Or is it just anyone in the classroom regardless of. You know, how physically close they may have actually been with this, with an impacted person. And also is concerned, uh, what is our plan for ramping up the resources for our communication? And then if there are any reasons that we can offer for the lower enrollment. Today.
I'll take the close contact question. So, um, so right now a close contact is defined as a cumulative of fifteen minutes. Within six or, you know, six feet or less of distance over a twenty-four hour period. However, given both the Delta surge and what we don't know yet about Delta. And also the challenges that teachers going back several days will have to determine. Who, who was really a close contact to other students in a classroom setting? We made a determination district-wide that close contacts would be the class or the bus or the learns class. And, and some of that reflects the fact that with the modified quarantine, in most instances, these students will not have to quarantine at home. Once we have tests and can fully test students when they are exposed. And so that seems to be consistently something that we're able to do, that everyone understands it. So that's teachers, that's families, that's the staff who's doing all the contact tracing and making determinations. And that seems to be working for us.
Okay, thanks. And that would be great to add to the clear communication on the website, I think, sort of the definition of close contact. I know it's somewhere, I saw it at one point, but I wasn't able to just find it. And then there's.
I'll, I'll try to jump in for the enrollment piece. And of course, Francisco Martinez is my enrollment guru. And he obviously, he prides himself on being able to predict these numbers year to year. So I know that for him, not hitting close to a hundred percent on projections is something he will probably not, not sleep over. But I believe what we're seeing is just the return in person and the impacts of eighteen months of COVID pandemic-related issues. We've seen students move out of the area. We've seen a variety of shifts. I would like to see relative data from our neighbors in neighboring districts to see if enrollment is just lower across the county. And I haven't seen that yet, but I think that is a trend we will most likely see. I don't know, Dr. Stevens, have you heard anything or on that side from other?
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I'm just starting to hear. So there is sort of informal chatter among us. Superintendents now starting to take place about enrollment, hitting enrollment projections. We seem to be completely in line with other East Bay districts who are reporting right now about a three percent decline in enrollment compared to projected numbers. The other thing that I might offer, and this, this really is a bit of conjecture. What we're finding is that we're somewhat over-enrolled compared to our projections in grades seven through twelve. We're under-enrolled compared to our projections in grades K through six. And of course, that grade six to seven dividing line is where vaccines are available in seven through twelve and where they're unavailable in K through six. And I don't know that that's the cause. But, but it, but it is notable nonetheless that that's the dividing line between under-enrollment and actually exceeding our targets.
Okay. And then I think Director Babbitt had a question about, are there any plans to sort of increase our capacity for communications? I guess, you know, through resources or any other, any other plans?
Uh, there are, I might jump in on this one. And, and I think particularly where we're sort of struggling. You know, with twenty-four cases in a three-week period, the communication that families really hope to get from the district as it relates to quarantining. How to take advantage of modifying, modified quarantine rules, information about cases. This has really been, I think, sort of the most feedback we've received from families. And where we're looking to try and increase the team strength, particularly around contact tracing and family communication. So we are right now actually actively seeking those resources. We're talking with some potential partner organizations. And have actually identified a couple of individuals even as recently as today, who we'd like to talk to soon. About joining the team and helping to sort of amplify our efforts with families to be clear and timely about, about quarantine-related communication specifically.
Vice President Brown.
Um, thank you, President Albert. I wanted to ask, since we were on the enrollment topic. I wanted to ask what our efforts were to be in communication with families to get data around their decisions to unenroll. And if they are COVID-related. What information has been, the decisions to be enrolled or COVID-related? What information has been given to them to let them know our efforts and ensuring that our campuses are, are safe for students to be there?
I don't have specific efforts to speak to the families who didn't enroll. I know that the school sites, as they do initial outreach to see if there are no-shows or, you know, they're, they're cleaning up their data now. That is a great suggestion. If they do make contact with those families to maybe ask a question or two. Cause that would give us some, some data around, around why. Specifically around what our efforts to keep our campuses safe, really this venue, our board meetings, our communications. And our Dr. Stevens has, we, communications that go out and we're trying to, and that is my dog. That's whining next to me. Sorry about that. It's not a child crying. My dog. Dr. Stevens, any specific things around communication?
No, I, I think you've got all of that right. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that it was a dog and not a child.
It's a very human, human sounding dog. We might need to see visual proof. Okay, there, okay. Someone take a screenshot. Director Muscarini Swan, you're next.
Um, yeah, I, I just have a couple of concerns about testing and quarantine procedures. As someone who's in schools right now, I think that the assumption that students are masked constantly is an overly optimistic one. And even within my classes, I'm often around students who are either wearing their masks partially on or who are. Consuming foods or drinks with their masks partially off or all the way off. And, and you know, teachers are doing their best to try and encourage students to keep their masks on, but in a class of thirty people. Where they're already trying to teach and instruct, that's not necessarily always going to happen. And I think that that should be reflected in our quarantine periods because I've heard of multiple cases where students who are in like. I know of a case where a student who had a family member with COVID. Um, didn't, was able to go to school before getting tested because they were fully vaccinated and tested positive for COVID. A day later, but had already been attending school for two days. Which is essentially a case of close contact, maybe unmasked. We don't really know COVID. And like, if assuming, I mean, he was lucky that he got tested of his own accord. But if that student hadn't gotten tested, we don't know how long he could have been in a school around students potentially unmasked, spreading COVID. And I understand that, uh, like testing or finding enough testing kits is an issue, but I think it might be worthwhile to consider. Holding back on surveillance testing and instead requiring testing for even vaccinated students who have been in close contact with someone. Who had, was tested positive for COVID as well as student athletes. I'm an athlete myself. And I'm in very close contact with many students and also as athletics begin to ramp up, students will be playing against school. Students from other schools, which even like increases the risk of COVID. Which even like increases the risk of COVID even more because it's opening up the possibilities of transferring COVID cases from. Schools all around the Bay Area. I don't know if you guys remember, but even. The very end of the school year last year, there was a huge issue with the basketball team and there was almost an entire basketball team that had COVID. So I really think that reducing tests for athletics isn't really the best solution. I think that maybe we should be looking at reducing surveillance testing. Because that'll a decrease a lot of the amounts of tests that we're using and be reduced of the amounts of testing that we're using for students who aren't really in contact or in direct danger of COVID. But I would just like to really advocate for requiring testing for students, even if they're vaccinated, if they were in close contact with someone for COVID. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I can just jump in, I really appreciate all of those remarks and really appreciate the perspective of a student who's experiencing. You know, that that's sort of real rollout of, of all of these new rules that we're looking to, to have in place. You're naming such an important issue about, about mask wearing. There's actually an entirely different decision tree for close contacts if no masks are on. And it is why we've adopted this rule, like a lot of other districts in the Bay Area that we, we want all of our students and staff wearing masks inside and outside. And it is to protect against these more sort of restrictive quarantine procedures. So I'm glad to know that you're sort of having this experience that most kids are masked. It's also really important and will continue to reinforce with our staff that we have to ask for masks at all time. Because it's really vital to keeping kids on campus and in their classrooms.
If I can just really quickly say, I don't think that there should be a separate tree for masked and unmasked. Because I think that most of the interactions, we don't really have a way of knowing whether it was unmasked or unmasked. And I think it's better to stray on the side of caution as opposed to just assuming that children are keeping their masks on. And I understand that may be more, I think, instead of it requiring more testing, it should just, I mean, instead of it requiring more quarantine, it should just require more testing. Because if students are testing and they're negative, then they don't have to quarantine and they can go back to class. Yeah, if they're positive, they shouldn't be in school.
Okay, thank you, Director Sine.
Uh, thank you both for the presentation. A lot of information. I, I've got two, two categories of questions. One for Ms. McDermott and the other for Associate Superintendent Orellito. So let me just do the testing one first. You know, I definitely, I mean, I, I, I'm still just having such a personal struggle that. We're an educational institution that is transforming into a public health institution. That is not who we are. We're trying to open school. So I really do want to compel all of our community partners to step up in whatever way is, is appropriate. I think it's going to be a heightened problem when we expand our surveillance testing. Because we're going to find a lot more cases, because there's a lot of asymptomatic people, people who do not show any kind of COVID symptoms. Who could be carriers of COVID. And we know with the Delta variant. The load that people could be carrying is as transmissible as if you are symptomatic. So I'm not sure, like when President Alper or Director Babbitt are asking about how we're ramping up our communication strategy. I think we need to prepare our community for more positives, not less. It's not like you do more testing and you get less positives. Right now, the testing that's going all over the county, for the most part, is not surveillance testing. It's people going to testing sites because they either have been exposed or they have symptoms. Once you start doing surveillance of everybody, there's going to be more. So I think how we prevent the fear factor. Not to say that the fear is not legitimate, but how do we manage the alarm that people might have when we start seeing more cases? And again, I think any messaging that Dr. Moss from Alameda County Public Health. Or Dr. Hernandez from Berkeley Public Health can give us to help us brace our community. For what it means to do surveillance testing would be really important because I'm nervous. That the alarm bells are going to go really hog wild once we start doing surveillance testing. So my specific, and I, I would like to reiterate President Alper's recommendation that the flow chart get pulled out. Or copied and pasted out of the security or safety plan and put up on the web. Because people aren't going to sift through the safety plan trying to find it. So I think that would be great. I have one question around the 33% attendance for athletics. And then my other questions are for Associate Superintendent Orellito. Is that new? Because we did get some emails from the volleyball team saying that families weren't allowed to watch. They weren't allowed to be spectators. So I'm just curious, is this a new? A recent evolution of the requirements? And how do we come up with 30% versus 50%? And then I'll ask my other questions.
Ms. McDermott, do you want to jump in on this one or shall I?
Thank you, Kenny.
Okay, this is new, Director Sine. So we began the year, our original thinking was that we would not permit any spectators at athletic events. That made us the sort of only district in, in our East Bay Conference who had a no spectator rule. And we were finding that a lot of tension sort of at the gate was emerging, both for our own spectators and from folks coming from other places. The parents of teams who are driving here. So we had a chance to sit down with the athletic directors and the city of Berkeley Public Health Department to sort of describe what was going on. Using a new electronic ticketing system, we can actually assign the number of tickets that are available to any event. And we settled on the one third capacity is roughly where we were in the spring. That that sort of felt like it would be enough to permit a reasonable number of spectators in each location without, but while also being able to provide for distancing. And mask wearing, of course. So that's, that's the sort of new equilibrium we hope to achieve. We'll see how it works in practice. It's our current thinking about how to strike the right balance between accessibility and safety.
Great, thank you.
All right, go ahead with your other question.
Okay, my other question is around two, two, one quick one and one, well, they're both probably quick. But the enrollment numbers, the 3% below projection, those include independent study, right?
Correct, that's total enrollment.
Okay, so my only other question is in the professional development that was done leading up to school. I'm curious to know that it sounded like it was kind, there was some aspect of decentralized, like each school site got to kind of focus on what it needed to. I know that we've been very concerned about the socially emotional health of our students as well as our staff. And I'm just wondering, is there an effort to actually do some across the board? Training around socially emotional supports for students? And are you hearing anything? I know that we're hearing a lot around COVID. But are you hearing anything in the sense of how our students are faring as they're re-entering the classroom?
I have not heard that specific need, at least the first eight days of school. It's really been centered around COVID. And those cases, that's sort of has taken the forefront of that work. They, there was social emotional trauma informed practices training provided that, that is something that was part of, I didn't read off everything, but in my notes, I do have. Notes on that. And we are, our next professional development day is coming up in October. And we are looking at that, those agendas right now, what that will look like both centrally and then time for sex as well.
Great, thanks.
All right, Director Vasudev, and then we'll go back to Director Babbitt for one last question.
Well, thank you so much. I think this will be short. I had four questions, but two of them were already asked by the rest of my colleagues. So this will be. Just wanted to start off by thanking again the staff for all your great work at the beginning. And I think Associate Superintendent Orellito, you started your presentation with acknowledging just what day one was like. And I, I was going to the sites too and was really excited just to run into different staff members to run into you and to Mr. Mansinger at Cragmont. And just to see the, the central office at all the sites. I think that made a difference for our families, I know for sure. And for the staff as well. So thank you so much for being there. My questions were on, I know that Ms. McDermott said that, that they were going to update the staff vaccination information. And thank you so much for clarifying that there's still some data that's pending there. Will the final numbers be shared out publicly in some way, either at the next meeting or publicly on our, on our website? How, how will we know those updated numbers? And that's, that's question one. And should I ask my second one or just wait for, for her to answer?
Why you ask the second question and then, and then we'll get the answers to both.
Yes. And then my second question is that it's been flagged to me by a number of parents. That our after school programs have different protocols than the district, right? And this is causing some sense of confusion because, you know, if we are test, if, you know, children are under modified quarantine, they're getting tested twice a week and then going back to class. It seems that some of the after school providers have different protocols. Then, you know, be USD and what they've said is, well, sometimes we work with different districts and, you know, sometimes we have kids from OUSD and BUSD coming. And so we have different protocols. So what kind of communication has happened at the district level to all the after school providers so that they're on the same page? And if our kids are cleared to go back to class, they should be cleared to go to those after school programs as well. Those are my two questions, updated staff numbers and after school program communication.
I don't know which order do, should we take this one? Should I start with after school? We'll work, work our way backwards.
I mean, I think the answer is yes, we will provide the updated staff numbers in some public way.
The answer is yes, and, and the process is actually just beginning. So our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Samantha Tobias Espinoza. Will be sending letters to all of the roughly 300 staff members we've identified who either have incomplete data. Or, or who appear now to be unvaccinated. So we'll be seeking to update that verification. And then beginning mandatory testing on September 7th for all unvaccinated employees. But we'll have updated sort of percentages once we go through that verification process.
As far as the after school programming, our protocols based on modified quarantine is that if students are modified quarantine, they're not participating in extracurricular activities. Which includes the Bears and Learns after school programming. Now, if we're talking about the non Bears and Learns programming, I will make sure that my director. He says stupid is working with both Aaron Jorgensen and Brazil McIntyre and reaching out to make sure that they're aware that it is the same protocol for our students.
Well, I guess my. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Early.
No, I'm just saying, if they're on modified quarantine, they are not to attend those programs. So that's.
But when can they attend based on our protocol?
Once they exit modified quarantine status.
So if they test twice and they exit, they should be able to attend, right? Which could be within a week.
Which can be within a week or the shortened quarantine for those who are coming off of that as well. And that's usually day eight.
What some of the after school programs have in place though, is that if you are exposed, you cannot attend for two weeks, right? And so under our modified quarantine, they can come back faster, right? Than the after school programs. I think that's the rub that parents are expressing, like, you know, they're cleared after two tasks. Yet I cannot take them to after school. And is that being communicated, you know, are the children getting, I don't know if this is happening because this hasn't been flagged yet. But if the children are being sent on a bus to an after school program provider. But they're still not cleared by the provider. I don't want them, you know, turned away at that point. So I, I'm just like concerned.
We'll look into that. Yeah, that's a good question. We'll look into that.
And I can send you the specific letter that came out about that. Thank you.
Perfect.
Director Babbitt, do you have one last question and then let's move on?
Yes, I'm just wondering, are we gathering our student vaccination rates? And in that 20,000 test kits are, how are we accounting for our staff surveillance testing that we're going to do? And then lastly, how are our students going to be educated during quarantine as one of the teachers mentioned tonight?
So go, go ahead, Trish.
Let me start. So in terms of our student vaccinations, we are now tracking them because that's actually a determinant of which quarantine or how students would quarantine after an exposure. So we do have a database now that we had some contractors develop for us and we refer to it constantly. I don't know Superintendent Stevens, if we have compiled a final number in terms of our student vaccination rate?
Uh, we don't have that final number and, and what we're finding is both that families are submitting vaccination information to us. And there's a certain error rate in the state database that's now reflected in our database. So we could publish a number, but we ought to sort of, you know, qualify that, that we may be off by about 8% in the number that we're, if, if we publish the state database numbers.
And then specifically around students on quarantine and education. So we are looking at, in our agreement with the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, the MOU, we specifically name for a quarantine status. A student's home for three days or more, we're using the short term independent study process. Now, where we have to be careful, if a student is out for 15 plus days, not that, that would be a consecutive quarantine. But in the cumulative year, they actually revert to the long term or the, the additional independent study program that we have would be ISBT. And Virtual Academy. So there is some new data and requirements are on that. But technically right now, it's short term independent study. So the expectation is our teachers would be providing some level of work, assignment, connection.
If I, if I, one quick, this is just my personal opinion about all of this. It was really clear, I think, as the state contemplated attendance codes and how districts can recoup money. They did not contemplate quarantines and they did not contemplate reverting to distance learning. We simply don't have codes right now. That would permit us to collect ADA for these two very common circumstances. So I'm anticipating at some point, California Department of Education may update their guidance to us. But right now we have this very cumbersome sort of independent study workaround for students who are in quarantine. And it's going to feel very confusing to our families as we ask them to do independent study for a quarantine. It's really nonsensical at the moment.
And the county is asking us to note it as an excuse absence right now for quarantine. But that's even, that doesn't really indicate what's happening.
Yeah, and I, I think that I saw an article today, maybe an ad source about how that, obviously it's a problem statewide. That is probably going to have to be addressed statewide. Director Sine, one last final quick comment?
Well, I guess what I was also hearing a little bit in Director Babbitt's question is what kind of support or expectation are our teachers getting? To provide the support for students when they're on this quarantine? And I, I think we heard from a couple of the teachers today that is challenging. And I know we've gotten emails. About my child, you know, got put on whatever the quarantine is and the teacher doesn't know what to do. So I'm just curious about how we're communicating with our teachers, because we did talk about that at the end of last year. That, you know, if not knowing the scale that it would be. But how would our teachers like do packets home or things like that? And I don't know what the expectation?
And this is continued to work. I am in contact with Matt Meyer and BFT, and we are going to be sitting down shortly to just hammer some of those things out. To really provide a little more structure to our teachers and what the expectation is around that work.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Let's move on to our next discussion item. Which is also about COVID. And this is not for action, but this is just for discussion about man, possible policy to mandate vaccines for student athletes. And extracurricular activities. So Dr. Stevens, who's leading this?
Uh, this, I'll take this one. And Ms. Harris, do you mind giving me permission to share my screen? It's just a very short presentation. So two weeks ago, when we were together, we had a discussion about the merits of adjusting the USD policy to require vaccination for our staff. Just by coincidence, we scheduled that discussion on the same day that the governor. And the CDPH issued an order to all school workers to be vaccinated or tested. As we've been thinking about ways to increase vaccination rates here in Berkeley. We scheduled this discussion tonight about the plausibility of mandatory vaccines for student athletes and students participating in extracurricular activities. We scheduled this just last week and we have been sort of behind the scenes trying to collect research about the legality of such a move. We'd hope to be able to answer the question definitively by the time we got to tonight's discussion. And that was not possible. We've been working with a sort of querying other districts as well as working with council to understand the, the sort of feasibility of this particular, particular policy change. So tonight is really meant to be a discussion that's meant to sound out the board's views. We are still conducting research. We're not in a position to be able to make a recommendation to the board this evening. So the, the prompt for tonight's discussion is, is should we staff continue to work on amending our current policy? About student athletes and extracurriculars to include a vaccination requirement? If we were to do this, we've identified the health examinations policy. I've written into blue what might, a set of amendments might look like to this particular health examinations policy. Essentially, we'd be applying to extracurriculars and then, and athletics, the expectation that students who participate. Essentially, we'd be applying to extracurriculars and then, and athletics, the expectation that students who participate in those would be fully vaccinated by October 15th. We picked that date somewhat at random, thinking that it would give about a six week lead time in order for all student athletes and extracurricular participants to be vaccinated. So this is really just a discussion item, question for the board is should we continue to press in this direction? What are its relative merits as, as we continue our work as staff to investigate the, the potential complications of this policy? So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the board and we'll do our best to answer questions that were, that were not fully prepared to make a recommendation tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevens. And I think it would be helpful to, to get a sense from the board whether, whether the board is interested in, in pursuing this, understanding that it's not completely, the legality is not completely clear. But do we want to encourage staff to continue, continue exploring this? So Director Vassadav, what do you, what are your thoughts?
I hadn't raised my hands, but I definitely have thoughts. I'm, I'm ready to go. Yeah, quickly, I think that, that the staff should continue exploring this. And also explore a vaccination mandate for all students who are eligible for vaccines. So I think this is a step in the right direction. And I think, you know, we should do this and also think, you know, of a longer, broader policy for all our students. But thank you.
Okay. Where, where are the rest of you on this? Director, Master Niswah.
Director Sana raised her hand first, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, I can go. I was just gonna say really briefly, I mean, we've talked about athletics and the issues around testing. And I think that this would go a long way towards partially solving some of those issues. And I would think, especially given that athletics, I could easily foresee being an easy way for COVID spreads from other schools coming into our school. And I think that this would be a really important way of mitigating that spread. So yes, I, I think this is definitely something that we should be exploring. And I also echo Director Vasswada's comments about looking towards vaccine mandates for all students who are eligible.
Okay, thank you. Director Sana?
I agree. And the only thing I would add is I would combine it as we're looking at the legal authority for Berkeley Unified to do this on our own. I would advocate that we call our state legislators and the governor's office to get a state mandate. Because I think together, you know, CSBA and the Association of Superintendents and the like, we should be putting pressure now the Pfizer, Pfizer, which is the only vaccine that's approved for young people is now fully FDA approved. And now is the time for the governor who can do it through an emergency order to do it statewide. So I would add the advocacy level into that. I do have one question around how we define extracurricular. Cause when we were just talking about after school, I don't really see after school programs as extracurricular in the sense of the ones that are, you know, full time, five day a week where kids are getting academic support and the like. So I, you know, I don't know exactly how we're defining extracurricular, but you know, I echo the mandate. And I actually think it would be good to look at it for staff eventually as well.
We don't, Director Sana, I appreciate that, that sort of observation. We don't yet have a definition of what extracurricular would look like. As we've been going about our explorations, we're not thinking about our bears and learns program. In this particular context, we're thinking more about high school, extracurriculars, things like band that, that, you know, take place after school, they're sort of elective, not all students participating. And nonetheless, could potentially increase vaccination rates if there were a requirement.
Would we be doing athletics at the middle school level? Cause they also have team sports.
Potentially. And we do have traveling team sports at the middle school level as well, much like it's much, much less formal.
Right.
We do have traveling team sports at the middle school.
Yeah. So I think we just, as, as staff continue to look forward, look at the consistency across those eligible for vaccinations and make sure we get the whole catchment.
Okay, thank you. Director Babett, Vice President Brown, just want you to get your way in on this.
Um. Well, I think we should also know what our current vaccination rate is for our students, athletes, because we could be spending time on a pretty non-issue if most of them are already vaccinated. And we have a lot of high priorities. So I think that's important as we prioritize spending time on this policy. And I also think that we have to think about families who can't, who even if they get vaccinated, right? Or they can't get vaccinated because of low immunization rates or other medical conditions that they have. You know, I have family members who they're vaccinated, but they're still only at like a 17% protection rate. And the risk of them getting the vaccination, you know, was, was an issue, just put it that way. So I just want to be clear that we really need to think of, no, I think we should know more about, you know, how this will impact some students who may now not be able to participate at all because of those, because of that mandate and what is our alternative? And if it's just back to the same testing as, you know, we might already be there because most people are probably already vaccinated. Who can do it, right? So that's just my only thought. But I'm not opposed to a policy to increase our vaccination rates.
All right. Thank you, Director Babett. I assume Dr. Stevens said any mandate would, would come with exemptions for people who, who needed accommodations or couldn't get vaccinated. Is that?
Yes, is, is our sort of early answer to that. We imagine probably much like we've seen in the employee sort of exemptions, that there would be something like a medical exemption and probably a religious exemption as well, that, that is common among sort of workplace vaccination requirements.
Okay. Vice President Brown?
Yeah, I think my recommendation is that I was, you know, would support this, given that we have an updated list of, and know the data on our students who are already vaccinated to help us make a more informed decision. And also would like to echo and support what Director Sina said in regards to our advocacy around, around this on the state level.
Yeah. And that's something that maybe Dr. Stevens and I can talk about and maybe try to delegate to some of our colleagues who have, you know, either interest or connections at, at the state level or with CSBA to do that advocacy. I'll just chime in to say that I too strongly support this and, and, and I, and, and I know that the law is unclear. I think that the, my understanding of the law in terms of requiring vaccinations just to attend school is clearer, clearer that that's harder to do and that the, the district that has done that is maybe out on a limb that is not as supportable. But, but that the, I guess, I feel strongly enough that if it's a closer question or if it's just unknown or no courts ruled on it yet, with respect to athletics and extracurriculars, that I would be willing to push the envelope and, and, and consider doing it anyway, even if the law isn't totally clear. Because of how important it is to get as many of our members of community vaccinated as possible. But we can cross that bridge when we come to it. It sounds like the direction that you have, Dr. Stevens, is to definitely continue pursuing this.
Thank you for the discussion. We do appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And now we'll move to our third discussion item. On the middle school assignment plan.
I'm going to share my screen and I'd like to introduce both to the board and to our community, Stacy Smith. Ms. Smith has joined us as a consultant on the community engagement process related to middle school enrollment. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Smith. She's not appearing on my screen right now and I want to make sure she's here.
I am here.
There you are. I now see you on my, on my tiny array. Ms. Smith, good evening to you. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
Great. And I will, I'll advance the screens and, and just let you take it from here and welcome again.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with everyone. The superintendent asked if I could just provide an overview of the fall 2021 engagement process. I'd like to start with the process overall. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the process has actually been, and continues to be a multi-month community engagement process. We started in May, June of this year, developing our outreach materials and, and doing our first community engagement activities. And now we are in phase two. We will have a period of multiple engagements, opportunities for folks to provide input and feedback in October and November. We'll report to the board and the superintendent will make his initial and final recommendation about the middle school enrollment policy to the board. And finally, in November, the board will make its final decision about the policy. Thank you. I just wanted to take a step back and talk about what we did in the spring. I did mention, I think a minute ago, we, we launched a community resource page on the website. That is still there. There is a quick link from the main page of the website. And we are, we provided information and updates about the process and we are continuing to update that page. So there is a history, background of the policy, why we're doing this now, an overview of the timeline and meeting dates. We conducted a survey of TK elementary and middle school families. There were Spanish and English language versions of the survey emailed directly to families. And we conducted extensive outreach throughout the USD's communication channels. We worked with principals, asked them to get the word out about it. And we sent reminders and actually one of our final reminders brought in several hundred more responses. In June, we held two community informational meetings. These were geared mostly towards introducing the community to the history of the policy, the, the policy alternatives being considered, what the process looked like. There were opportunities for the community to provide input during both of those meetings and throughout we, we use your multiple channels of communication to, to try to get the word out about all of it. Excellent. Thank you. I did just want to briefly touch upon the June survey. In this survey, we asked families to rate factors that were important to them when choosing a middle school. And then we, we shared the alternatives that were currently being considered by the district for as alternatives for the middle school enrollment policy, including the current policy. And we asked them to provide their choice to their initial choice. Throughout the survey, families were given opportunities with open responded, excuse me, with open response questions so that they could share their own thoughts about factors that were important to them as well as suggestions for alternatives to the, for the policy. We had 1,928 responses, which I hear is pretty good for a survey in the district and our families represented all grade levels and attended schools throughout the district. There is a survey report. It is being translated and it will be posted on the BUSD website in the next week or so. There's more demographic analysis in there, more a deeper dive into the responses. And I hope, I hope y'all take a look at it. Next slide, please. Thank you. The one thing that I did want to highlight from the survey was we did, as I mentioned, ask folks to consider the alternatives that were currently being considered. One of them is to expand middle school zones from two to three zones. One of them is to link elementary schools as feeders to specific middle schools. One alternative is to actually just leave the policy in place. And we also gave folks the option of just saying that they didn't know or they, they were undecided at the moment. This chart represents the responses from the community. And people were only allowed to choose one option. And what this chart tells me is that approximately 66% of the respondents were open to a change in the current middle school enrollment policy. About 20% wanted to leave it the same and about 14% were not sure. If we move into the fall and our additional engagement meetings, focus groups, et cetera, we're gonna ask more questions about this and, and sort of drill into this data a little bit. Next slide, please. Thank you. So here we are in fall. As I mentioned, we are starting up a wide array of activities. We are going to be doing focus groups. We're meeting with educators. I'm working with Ms. Dean right now on speaking to all the principals so that they both can provide input and get the word out to their communities. We'll be holding affinity group meetings, more community wide meetings like those we did in June. And throughout, we'll be updating the community, not only through Berkeley's communication channels, but also through the website, which I guess is communication channel. In October, we'll be giving the board an initial memo of findings of throughout, you know, our findings from throughout the process. And the superintendent will be making his initial recommendation to you about what to do about the policy. And after that, we're going to launch a community survey so that there's one more round of input for folks to share what they think. And then in November, we're going to come back to you with an updated memo of findings. We're gonna, the superintendent will provide his final recommendation to you. And at that point, you will be able to make your decision. Next slide, please. Thank you. Throughout, and I, I can't emphasize this enough, we are going to be reaching out in as many ways as possible to reach the members of the community, working with key partners to get the word out, to help us to fill those focus groups, to help us to get folks at meetings, to be able to listen to as many voices as possible. And I wanted to put here the two community town halls that are scheduled at the end of September. We do have those dates. If they're not up on the website, they should be soon. And please mark your calendars and hope to see you there. Next slide, please. Thank you. And finally, the last thought is that community input is critical. There is, as the superintendent told me, you know, no decisions have been made about the policy. It, you know, the community members are welcome to make suggestions. All ideas are being considered. You know, we want to know what people are curious about. We want to answer those questions. And so please, I'm asking all of you, I'm asking folks who are listening this evening and folks who may be watching this on YouTube later on, spread the word, keep an eye on the website, look out for those dates and please do participate. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. It's, it's great to have you here. Thank you for that presentation and for all the work that you've done so far. So now this is also is just here for discussion. I have Director Babett and then Director Sana.
Thank you so much. My question is, it feels rushed, but I don't know if this is a question, but first is a statement that this feels very rushed for me. Like my heart started beating fast that this is coming up so quickly. And how can we actually be sure that we're going to get robust participation in that timeframe? Given all the other priorities and all the other communications that are actually happening right now. Parents are joining committees. Parents are worried about COVID. We're talking about sports. Like there's a lot to digest right now. And so my question is, what is our threshold for deeming this adequate response? Like adequate community engagement, especially among people of color and people who live far away from certain schools or who will have transportation issues. And also how are we going to make sure that they're, they're also seeing the policy or the potential policy, the potential changes? For example, you know, people are worried about, you know, we're, we're legacy Longfellow. We're a legacy king. Like we are a legacy Willard. The transportation will be a huge issue and we don't offer transportation at middle school. So are those pieces of the conversation going to? We haven't written a policy yet, but at what point will people be able to say, well, now I don't support this because, you know, I don't have a sibling clause or it doesn't have the things that we need that are important to our family to continue with this choice. And also lastly, want to make sure that our staff is very much engaged in this process. Those who serve our middle school students who've been in the district for a very long time. And, you know, they know what they're, what they're trying to. you know, they know what they're, what they're trying to do and accomplish with the current population that they historically have and currently have. So to me, that's also an extremely important part of this conversation.
Thanks so much, Director Babett. And Ms. Smith, I wonder, there were, there were a lot of elements to the comments and questions, but would you feel that you could respond specifically to what families would be seeing if they participate in this next phase of the engagement? So sort of things like maps. And then as well, do you think you could respond to the question about staff engagement? And then I'll take some of the other questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. As we did in the spring, as part of our meetings and focus groups, there will be a presentation for folks that goes over the alternatives that are being considered. There are, there are maps and will continue to be maps that are shared with the community, both at these presentations and in these focus groups in the, and also on the website. And so that is, you know, sharing this information is very important because the Berkeley community needs to make an informed decision about their opinion, right? They need to have the information they need to be able to decide, how do I feel about this? I completely agree with you, Director Babett. In addition, as I mentioned, I think there, we'll be reaching out to principals, reaching out to educators. We've been talking about how best to, to get the word out to staff and make sure that, that we're communicating with staff and that there's an opportunity for discussion at that level, because I agree with you. Oftentimes, our school staff are the ones who are there and getting the questions and, and need to know. So that is very important as well. That answer your questions?
But I think Dr. Stevens, you were gonna address.
Yeah, and then I, I'd like to respond to the concern just about the overall timeline. We, we're definitely feeling that sort of same strain right now. Through the better part of this meeting, we've been talking about how much efforts or energy COVID is taking right now. And that we have a variety of other district priorities that we're trying to pursue on top of risk mitigation. So that the process that Ms. Smith laid out is one that we considered very carefully in light of the circumstances. But none of us staff members would sort of describe it as ideal. It's sort of what, what we came up with under the circumstances. We are, as we go along, being very sensitive to feedback that we might be getting about the overall pace of this project. And whether or not we're sort of striking the right pace in bringing a recommendation to the board in late October. So we do really welcome that feedback, both from board members, but also from members of the community. And we're, we're sensitive to it and feeling it ourselves.
What about setting thresholds for what, what is deemed adequate response or adequate community engagement? Because you can have 10 meetings, but the participation is so low. Specifically from target populations that I wouldn't necessarily still say that you've gotten adequate. You've had adequate community engagement. And so I think it would be helpful if we set some kind of parameters that we, we were reaching for to make sure that we didn't just move forward based on a timeline and, oh, well, if you missed it, you missed it. Because this is extremely important.
We, we don't have any pre-established thresholds for sort of what success looks like. We'd, we'd be happy to go back and do some thinking about what that might look like. And as we go through this process, would be happy to share, we will make very transparent the numbers of people who are participating in all of these events. And then welcome feedback about how successful we're being under these circumstances in attracting folks in, into the events and giving us feedback on these plans.
Well, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to also add that everyone I have spoken to since we started this project, I have asked, how can we engage more people? Who are the hardest folks to reach and how do we reach them? How do we get folks involved? And that is something that is very, very much on my mind as we, as we move forward. And something that, that I think as a superintendent, so we're constantly evaluating. It's, you know, it's, it's not enough to just hold meetings. It needs to be meetings where, where we have folks there who, who we want to hear from, so.
And we'll have an opportunity when it comes back to us in October to assess at least individually or collectively as a board, whether we're satisfied with the level of engagement that's that, that we've accomplished and whether we want to stick to the timeline that, that we're on. Director Sina, you're next.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for all the work you've done. And I'm just, I'm just gonna put it out there in order to help kind of at least focus my, my, my comments is I think we need to extend the timeline. I think we launched this at a time that we created the timeline ourselves. It's not being pushed on us by any external factor. A little bit of context, it was due to the fact of low enrollment at Longfellow. We brought in new administration. We've added the seventh period and are working on enhancing the programming. We're about to launch a capital project and we're doing all this in COVID. And so I feel like Ms. State, Ms. Smith, you have done a phenomenal job with the conditions that you've had. I think the fact that we got almost 2,000 responses in the survey is, is great. I'd like to see some disaggregated data of the elementary school level on what their interests are, because I think in the long run, those are the students who we're going to be impacting. So I'd like to see the, the chart broken down by grade level, or at least like three through five, and what their preferences are. But I feel like we need to do much more engagement at the, the three through five level. And I think in the midst of the Delta variant and COVID, we just aren't gonna get the level of engagement that would feel satisfactory to me. And so I, I feel like we don't, we don't need to add that stress onto our families and to our staff to move it forward. I think it just means a year. You know, I'm not saying let's just table it, but I think we need to give ourselves the time and not hit October and still not be satisfied. Because even if we got 100 more people to be engaged, it's 2,500 kids for the long term. And I think we really need to be thoughtful about it. So I just want to encourage us not to rush something that if we, if we push it for a decision to be enacted next year, I think it'll backfire because what will happen is, our goal is to try to increase enrollment at Longfellow. And what could happen is flight, because a decision was, a decision was made too quickly without proper communication and rationale. And I don't think we want to make a decision that actually backfires. I think we want it to be really thoughtful. So I don't know what it means for your contract, because I want to continue with you. But is, if there is a way that we can extend it and be thoughtful and creative over the course of the next, you know, eight months to get that kind of feedback, I would encourage us to do that.
Director Vice President Brown.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with what Director Sina said. I think my concerns also are about our, our timing and Superintendent Stevens, you asked for our feedback around our timing. And I think that when we created the timeline, we didn't, I don't think we anticipated how heavy of a lift our return to schools would be, especially with now all of the new findings for the Delta variant. And I think that we as a district should be a little bit more intentional about prioritizing our priorities and making sure and ensuring that we take care of the things that we already have on our plate currently. Now, that doesn't mean that we, we should put a pause on engagement. As you heard from my fellow colleagues, that means we should, of course, expand engagement. But I think that it would be in our best interest to really take some time to think about our timeline. Especially as October and November are around the corner to both receive the recommendation and then have the board make a decision about how we'll move forward. Additionally, we have projects coming up and that will finish in about three years in some of our middle, middle schools. That should also be taken into consideration. And so you asked for our recommendation. My recommendation would be to reconsider the timeline to, to, for us to vote on this project and to receive your recommendation.
Okay, Director Vasudev.
Yeah, I want to echo everything that my peer said. Thank you so much, Vice President Brown, for your comments. And also Director Sina and Director Babett. I agree. It feels like a lot. And I don't want us to, you know, bite off more than we can chew this year. Because our focus is like, we've reopened our schools. We need to keep our children in. We need to get the testing right. There's so many protocols that we need to just get right in these next couple of weeks. That this is not setting us up for success. And it's also one of the most important decisions that we can make as a board. So we need to be thoughtful about who's in the room, you know, how we're engaging our communities of color. I have a question specifically around the June meetings that took place after the school year ended. So I would like to know how many went to the English session and how many went to the Spanish session? If you have those numbers, if you could report them out. Now also say, I would like to see more affinity-based focus groups, particularly because some of our middle schools have very unique programming, like King has a new current program, right? There's a TWI program. And so that's a very specific affinity group that we need to engage. We need to talk to our, you know, Yemeni families. We need to talk to our, you know, Spanish-speaking families, lots of families that depend on those programs to understand what the impact of this means for them, right? And I don't see that as part of this process. Also, transportation-wise, right? Middle schools, when children start making decisions on how to get to school on their own, right? And so there's city transportation goals and sustainability goals, and this needs to be somewhat consistent with that, right? So I'd like to see how we're talking to our city partners about transportation, how we're talking to AC Transit about the different plans on the table. Because that's gonna require maybe changing the bus routes. And so that takes time. That takes time to plan it. And I, you know, took part a little bit in San Francisco's reassignment system from the transportation side. And I can tell you that's challenging. You have to be very thoughtful and you have to start those conversations early. And I don't see those happening as part of this plan, so I'm concerned. Again, I think, you know, it's about extending the timeline. I agree with what Director Sina said. You know, I'm feeling uncomfortable. I think it will, we'll set ourselves up for success extending that timeline. And really being thoughtful about the focus groups and thoughtful about the transportation. I'm really glad that Director Babett brought that up because that takes a long time. And we have to talk to not only our city partners, but you know, our regional transit agencies about the implications of that. Or else be honest about the cost that it's gonna, you know, take for the district to be able to transport children if that's what we decide to do. So all of these things, I think a recommendation in November sounds very fast to me. And I'd like to note, lastly, those participation numbers for the June meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, do you happen to know offhand the participation numbers for those June meetings?
I'm afraid I do not have that in front of me, but, but I can get back to you with them.
Okay. I will offer my thoughts and then and then we can hear from the superintendent and move on, because I think that what I'm hearing, oh, I'm sorry, Director Lastrania Swan, did you have comments?
Um, well, I wasn't really part of the decision-making process around the timeline earlier this year. So I feel like I have a little less input. But from what I've heard today, it seems like a reasonable decision to extend the timeline and give us a little bit more time, especially given the current circumstances to really flush this out.
Okay. Well, I, I don't, I guess I don't necessarily disagree with what you all are saying, but I do want to offer a little bit of a perspective because first of all, I just, I think it's important to note that we've already delayed this by a year. We originally had, we originally voted as a board to have a timeline that would result in a board decision in November of 2020 last year, for good reason. I think we, we postponed it. I mean, the good reason was COVID. And so we proposed on postponed it for a year. The reason why November is the date that we keep picking is because we need to make a decision by November in order for the admissions office to have their stuff together so that it can be implemented for the next fall. Although there could be a decision by the board to change the assignment policy and delay the implementation by a year to get people, you know, give people a year to get used to it or understand what it, how it works or to get transportation figured out. But we have delayed this by a year already. So that's one thing I just think is important context. If we, if we delay it past, if we delay even by a month, we're delaying it a whole year because it's too late for, for that next year. And I, I gather from this conversation that a majority of the board is, is okay with that if that's the result. And, and, and I don't, you know, I don't disagree that it feels rushed and that there's so many other priorities and that I, I don't want to add, add more of a burden on staff, even though we have Ms. Smith, you know, working for us, it's still a lot of staff time that's going to be taken up on this, especially I think maybe as Director Babett, somebody mentioned, you know, getting engaged or maybe Director Sina, our own staff and our own teachers and principals. I respectfully, Director Sina, I, I don't think that the impetus for this was low enrollment. The impetus for this was the fact that the demographics at Longfellow are completely different than the demographics of the other two middle schools and that we essentially have segregation in our middle schools that we don't have in the elementary schools and that we don't have at the high school. And that that is, I, I know it's, this isn't necessarily a universal opinion in the district or even on the board. I personally feel like that's one of the that, that is, you know, Vice President Brown, you mentioned focusing on our priorities. To me, that's one of the key equity issues in the district at the, at the moment, is that we have a segregated middle school assignment process. And I think that needs, I, I, I think it's urgent that we address it. And and I think it's gonna be unpopular. I think we have to set ourselves up for success, which is why I'm not disagreeing with what you are saying in terms of the timeline. But I do, I think this, I think I feel a different sense of urgency that I'm hearing from my colleagues because the fact that there's gonna be a lot of people in the community who don't like this, who expected to send their kids to King and now there's zone for Longfellow or vice versa. Or there's gonna be groups of the community in all three of the zones. If we do that, then they're gonna be unhappy. That can't be the reason we don't do this. We need to make sure that everyone is educated about the potential plan, has the opportunity to provide input, that asks really good questions and gets really good answers. But I believe we can't, and it may not even happen while I'm on the board, but it can't be that we're afraid of of pushback from the community on this because desegregating schools is, is always fraught and always a challenge and, and, and never going to be universally popular. But I think a prerequisite to really claiming to have an equitable middle school plan. So I just wanted, I wanted to say that. I'm happy. I see Director Sina and Director Babett, their hands up too. And if this is the direction, I'm sure Dr. Stevens can go back with, with Ms. Smith and rethink the, the timeline. But I just wanted to have offered my thoughts on the context for it. Director Sina?
So when I, when I say extend out the timeline, I don't think that means we have to wait till next November to make a decision. I think it means we extend it out to where we think we can get legitimate and authentic feedback from all sectors of our community. And I think given some of the things Director Vasudev said, there are some things we need to have in place before we make a decision to implement. So if we make a decision by March or April, that also gives us time to put things in place. So by the time we actually trigger a new enrollment policy, it's not a guess of what's gonna happen. It's stuff that's already in place. And I guess I, I agree with you around the desegregation component, but I think it, it's not just a question of desegregating Longfellow. It's that there was a disproportionate number of students who are at the ASI, you know, that the risk, the trade winds, headwinds.
Headwinds.
Headwinds, you know, that, that Dave Stevens talked about. So it's not, it's not just a question of ethnically or racially desegregating the school. It's how attractive has the school been in the self-fulfilling prophecy? When students are not achieving and that other students don't want to come in? So yes, it's, 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 it's desegregating, but it's also making sure that the program is enriched with all types of learners. And, and I, you know, my daughter went there when it was predominantly students of color and it was a great school. So I, I don't want to desegregate in order to separate out communities of color. I want to make sure it is a rich and enticing program for every and all student to want to be there. Knowing that it's never gonna be as big as King. It's never gonna be as big as Willard because it's just geographically smaller. So I, you know, and I think there's a lot in this discussion right here that parents and families need to engage in, because there are a lot of differing opinions about what it means to alter a school Alter a school community. And I do think that we need to look at, how do we make sure all of our schools are balanced? Racially, ethnically, learning styles, you know, and and teacher diversity, et cetera. Um, I just think we need some time to to process that. So. Um, but I don't think we wait and I don't think this means punt until next November.
No, I, just to be clear, Director Sinai, I appreciate all those comments. I didn't, what I meant when I said a year is that. We we can't implement any new policy. Sorry, everyone's um keep moving around. We can't implement a new policy by fall of twenty twenty two. If we don't make this in by November. So it means punting the implementation of any new policy for another year. But I hear what you're saying. It doesn't mean we don't have to make, we can't make a decision until November of twenty twenty two. I understand. Director Brown, uh Vice President Brown.
Um, you know, it's really hard to go after Director Sinai because she literally says everything that you want to say indirectly. Indirectly, everyone. Anywho, so um, but I I also want to caution us. Um, board members to to kind of think about the way and the wording that we use to talk about Longfellow. Um, so I want to, I want to caution us um. From from using language that could possibly be um a bit offensive to the communities that are currently there. So I want to just go on record by saying that. And then secondly, my my question um to uh Stacy and to Brent. Um, is, can you talk a little bit more about um the ways that you've engaged um the city around this? Um, around this idea, the ways that our um city partners have been um. Uh, have offered feedback on this. Um, specifically when we talk about our transportation, specifically when we talk about um a additional. Traffic that will happen when we think about um families coming from the hills down to the schools that they're going to be. Um, assigned to. Have we considered their feedback? Have we, wha- what's happened around that?
I'll jump in. Um, so so the work that we did in June, which was two two town halls in the survey. Is the extent of the engagement process to date. Uh, and that's really, so we're very, very early in this engagement process. Uh, we have not involved city partners. We have not involved transit agencies. Uh, nor we actually shared specific details about a feeder pattern model or a rezoning. Um, we do, as of yesterday, just now have draft maps to illustrate what that might look like. Those will enable us to get far better feedback. Uh, but they're not meant to be proposals, nor would they even give us enough to sort of begin begin any detailed planning conversations with with other partner agencies. So, uh, short answer, we haven't started that work. Uh, that that would be work in front of us in our engagement process.
Um, okay, and just, I just want to respond, Vice President Brown. I don't think I, I didn't, I don't, if I. Did, I didn't mean to mention Longfellow in particular because to me this is a middle school issue. It's not a Longfellow issue. Um, I'm looking at old numbers which are from eighteen nineteen, um, which is when we first started thinking about doing this. Um, so these numbers are from a few years ago, but for example, King was um forty eight percent of King's students were white. Sixteen percent of Longfellow students were white. That that huge disparity, I think, is is an issue both for King and for Longfellow. Willard also had someone that was to King. Just looking at socioeconomically disadvantaged, um, low income students, Longfellow sixty two percent, King twenty five percent. Um, that stark um difference in demographics. I think we, I I just think we have to be honest about it and and it may be that we um. It's not a knock on the school, uh, um, on any of the schools. I think all three of our middle schools are excellent. Um, but there's um, if if we're gonna, i- i- I think we have to at least have the, at least we have to be a. Um, explicit about being okay with those stark differences if we really are and that that's a, that's a um, that's a plan that we've decided it's okay to have. Unlike at the elementary school and unlike at the high school, where we've made, particularly in the elementary school, we only have one high school, but particularly at the elementary school. Where we've said, we're not going to have neighborhood schools because we want to make sure that the demographics of each elementary school. Um, are 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 similar across the district. Because if we had, if we had neighborhood elementary schools, we know that some schools would be all white schools, um, or almost all white schools. Um, and we've decided not to do that as a district. So if we're at the middle school, we're going to say we're essentially going to have neighborhood middle schools. Um, and and tolerate really vastly different demographics in the different schools because we think there's, you know, real value in that. Um, then we should, you know, have that discussion and and say that, but um, but it's not really what we generally. Say about what our integration goals are or what we pride ourselves on. Um, so. Anyway, um, that's, so I just wanted to respond to that. Sorry, um, Director Vasudev, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I really appreciate your comments, President Alper, and that, you know. Phil- philosophically, like policy wise, I agree with you that, um, you know, those disparities and who's attending which school are really real and we need to address them. So I don't disagree with that. I think my fear is that if we rush this process, you're not going to get community buy in and that we may end up losing students, which none of us. Wants as an end result, right? And so I think for community buy in, given what a year we have and the challenges that we have ahead of us. It makes sense to ex- you know, extend the community engagement period. And also to, you know, if we really care about equity and diversity and we really need to do a better job engaging our families of color. I don't have the June numbers, but I bet you they weren't great for the Spanish session. I guarantee they weren't. And, you know, prove me wrong, Superintendent, I want to be proven wrong, but let's, I, you know, I, that concerns me. And right now, there's things that we're implementing that maybe it could be better, like, quite frankly, you know, I had a great time visiting the newcomer program and learning more about it at King. But maybe that's a program that a lot of Longfellow students that are there could actually benefit from being at King at, right? Like, we don't know, there's things that are being implemented now, President Alber, that I think that we can better address as a district right now. Um, but I don't, I think, you know, when you have stronger buy in and when you've had those real conversations about what's the bu- what's the line in the sand? How much is this going to cost us if we decide to transport our students or if A C Transit is going to change some bus lines? Like, that level of conversation, we need to know that before implementation. And I think, you know, in the case of San Francisco, they made a recommendation, but the implementation came much later, right? It's because the city has to readjust. The city had to make changes to the tran- to the transit system, right? Those are the kind of things that I think that's the level of detail that this conversation needs. It's something that can't be rushed and it's one of the most challenging decisions that we have to make as a board. So we have to get it right. And there's so many things this year that we need to get right, guys. So, you know, I just want to set us up for success, but philosophically and everything that you're saying, President Alper, I really agree with you. And I'm also, you know, concerned about those disparities. I just want us to be thoughtful.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate that and I appreciate all of you and 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 you're very, you you, I didn't come into this discussion thinking that. We had to postpone the um timeline, but I, but I think you're very compelling and um. And I agree with with everything you you're saying in terms of the timeline. And so maybe there's a slightly different perspective on on the ultimate question, but that's fine. Because that's what we'll have the discussions about as we go forward. Um, so I think we've, I don't see other hands. So I think, um, I think you have your direction, which is to reconsider the timeline. And and come back to us with, you know, at some point, we can talk about it with Vice President Brown. You know, talk about, ta- talk about when that will be, but we want to keep the work going and and we were very appreciative, um, Ms. Smith of the the work you're doing. Um, and um, you've heard the, you've heard, you know, what we'd like to see in terms of engagement. Um, and and also a lo- a longer timeline. Um, I do think Dr. Stevens, that um, there is particular interest in this at at Longfellow. And so I hope that this this is sent this direction to delay the timeline, which will mean that that we would not be able to implement this for next school year. Um, if you could make sure that that's communicated, particularly to the principal and and the staff at Longfellow, but at all the middle schools. And probably the the elementary schools too, since those are the communities that are going to be coming into the middle schools. It would be helpful both for those communities who are who are wanting a decision and for families who are anxious about a decision and might be relieved to hear that. It's not going to be as on as rushed a timeline as they thought it was going to be. Um, or or maybe that's for you, Associate Superintendent Aurelia, but if we could, if we could make sure that we communicate this direction, I think that would be helpful. Does that, Dr. Stevens, uh, Superintendent Aurelia?
Yes, all all of that sounds fine. We're we're going to pull back from this discussion. It's been very helpful for us to listen in to these deliberations. Um, we'll have to do a little bit of thinking about what that will mean pragmatically. Uh, and once we've done that thinking, then we'll communicate out both to the folks who are interested in this, the staff members who would take part. And then be sure that board members are sort of updated on the bit on on the way we're contemplating all of this feedback.
Um, uh, Vice President, I mean Vice President, um, Director Sinai, sorry.
Um, I I just want to clarify that I'm kind of going back to the survey is, I don't think any of, well, I'll speak for myself. Um, none of what I'm saying um is to reinforce the status quo. You know, when we looked at the survey and there was the twenty percent. Uh, Ms. Smith that said, you know, keep things as they are. That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we need to have a deeper process to look at what the change is and how we can um basically defend the change. Because we had good community process. So I don't want people to think, because I think, uh, President Alper. I don't think we're necessarily all that divergent on where we might land. It's how we get there.
That's fair. I I hear you. I appreciate that.
Sorry, I was just going to say, Director Sinai, I very much appreciate that um comment and I really appreciate being here with you all. This evening to hear this conversation. I've been taking notes and so thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for being here and thanks for all your work. Um, and we will now move on, okay? Now, we have a, we have a number of very quick action items and then we will, we will be able to finish this meeting um not too late. So the first one is, this is just to ratify the direction that we gave last week, which was to. Implement what the state is making us do anyway, which is mandate vaccines for employees or testing. So. The first vote is to waive the second reading of the board policy because we need to approve it tonight. So this is, uh, Doctor Stevens, you can interrupt if I get this wrong, but I'm just trying to run through it.
Sure, and and Samantha Tobias Espinosa is also prepared to offer just a very quick sort of um recap for members of the public. About the policy amendments that will be approved tonight.
Isn't it just that we're going to require staff to either get vaccinated or test?
Yes, it's, and and all we're doing is updating our board policy um on universal precautions to um state that.
Okay, great. So um, I'm going to move to waive the need for the second reading of that policy. Is there a second?
The motion.
Second by Vice President Brown. Ms. Chires, are you still with us?
Yes, Director Muscatting Swan?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
BP Brown?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes, all right. Now I'm going to, now moving on, I'm going to move to approve the actual policy now. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Second, my Vice President Brown. Ms. Chires?
Director Muscatting Swan?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes, all right. Now, um. Uh, and these are not action, right? Doctor Stevens, these are just two public hearings.
That's correct.
Okay, now we're going to hold two public hearings for that we have to redo for technical reasons. The first item fourteen point one is a public hearing um on our budget for this current year, twenty one, twenty two. Um, I'm going to open it up now. If anyone has public comments specifically, this is not general public comment. But this is specific public comment about our budget for twenty one, twenty two. Now is the time to raise your hand. Not seeing anybody, I will close that public hearing. And I will open the next public hearing, which is at fourteen point two. Also, for technical reasons, we are reopening it. Um, so now is the time. To um, raise your hand for public comment. This is on the local control and accountability plan, also, well, our our three year plan. I'm opening that public hearing and now I'm closing it. Okay. This is democracy at work. Um, next, we have our final public comment period. Of the night. So if now is an opportunity, if you'd like to give public comment. On anything? Raise your hand. I'm going to give everybody. Ten more seconds. To muster the courage. Only Lindsay Nofelt is courageous enough to raise her hand. Um, at the end of the meeting, Ms. Nofelt, you have three minutes and then we will adjourn for the night.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Vice President Brown, you, she's got three minutes.
All right. My name is Lindsay Nofelt. I'm a parent at Cragmont. And um, I really appreciate the board's commitment to vaccines. This is a two part comment. Um, however, I want to make sure that when you explore vaccine mandates. That they are approved by the FDA fully, not just on an emergency basis. Currently, the Pfizer vaccine is approved for sixteen and up. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. And then, secondly, when you consider the middle school enrollment process, now that it is at a slower timeline. Perhaps there is an opportunity to look at how to make the process easier. Can people just opt out of middle school instead of having to go in and fill out these forms? Every year, I see parents desperately filling out forms months after the official deadlines. Which might exacerbate the reasons why there's disparities in the demographics between the schools. So the, just, it's just something to think about. Is there any way that you can make it easier for people to go from elementary school into middle schools? And and that, I also have a dog. Look at me.
Can we see it, Lindsay?
No. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I appreciate it. All right, um, it's nine twenty nine. Have a good night, everybody. We're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Bye, thank you, everybody.